Hello, everyone. Good day, good morning here, good evening. This is the UNIPIC special session of the conference, the entitled Mainstreaming Lakes and Wetlands, the Global Water Agenda and SDGs. We are very happy to have you all and also the audience from across different continents. My name is Masahisa Nakamura. I am the Vice President of ICIC. And this webinar meeting is broadcasted from Japan. I will facilitate the first half. And rather than going to the individual introduction, as I go along the program, I will introduce the speakers one at a time. Now, we are on schedule to have a series of presentations and so on. But before going to the presentations, we would like to hear, very fortunately, from the Executive Director of UNEP, congratulatory remarks. The message will be communicated by Patrick May of UNEP. Patrick, please.
Good morning and good afternoon and good evening, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome everybody. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you to this ICIC-UNEP session. And it's a privilege for me to be in this session. First of all, let me say that on behalf of our Executive Director, who had prior arrangements, I have now been charged to do this presentation, this automated remarks on her behalf. I'd like to say shortly that it is a privilege to participate in this 18th World Lake Conference, especially so in the ICIC-UNEP special session under the current pandemic situation. Indeed, it is both an advantage and sometimes a disadvantage. Let me just say briefly that our journey with ICIC started way back in 1984, under the late Toba, the Executive Director then of UNEP, who initiated the formation of the ICIC. And since then, UNEP has been working very closely with ICIC up to date. I'm revisiting this because this long association forms the trail in our partnership as UNEP is approaching its 50th year next year, since its formation. Working arrangements since then utilized, has utilized MOUs as one of the working arrangements we have been able to carry out joint projects and activities with other UN agencies and partners. With this, we have highlighted the plight of global lakes in publications and under key projects and activities like the TWAP, the GEO and the Wild Water Quality Assessments, ETC. Why do we talk about lakes? As you're aware, lakes and wetlands form 98% of the liquid global surface waters, while rivers from the remaining 2%. The freshwater is the backbone of terrestrial life on Earth. Current socioeconomic quantifications though do not completely indicate that lakes have immense socioeconomic value, are estimated to contribute at least 4.4 trillion US dollars per year to the global economy. Over the past years, however, we have tended to focus more on rivers, wetlands and groundwater, especially in areas where surface water is scarce. As you can see, our wealth therefore lies in lakes and wetlands, which if sustainably managed and utilized, should be as a help us achieve the relevant SDGs and alleviate poverty while protecting these ecosystems. This will depend on our collective knowledge and the sharing of the same on relevant platforms and in forums. This will also enable us to continually derive their products and services for people within the basins and beyond. Now, lakes are also the primary indicators of climate change and variability. Their size compared to oceans provides us the first vital signs of climate change and variability. Data monitoring and analysis must become the regular norm with which informs the regular management actions. And credible scientific data should inform policy and decision-making and also receive the required political will if we hope to maintain this beautiful ecosystem for the benefit of our children. The diversity of animal and plant species in lakes and wetlands is just beginning to be understood. And our deliberate actions will be required to assess and quantify this for the wealth and ecosystem health of lakes and wetlands. Now, threats facing our lakes and wetlands are real. An estimated 50% of wetlands have been lost globally since the beginning of 19th century. That's the estimate that we have through human development and mismanagement. This has a huge impact in terms of benefits and services derived. On the other hand, a number of lakes have been lost also. They need to be managed. Lakes need to be managed more carefully as their visible pollution signs appear long after they're already polluted or have passed their tipping point. In the case of the amount of water lost or a result of, as a result of obstruction, as in the example of the well-known RLC. We have some emerging threats to lakes. I'd just like to mention the problem of plastics in waterways has been around for some time. However, the emergence of microplastics, which are only beginning to be understood in the marine environment and now also in fresh waters, need to be tackled over the coming years. It is emerging that this do not only enter the ecosystem but also the human and animal digestive systems. Assessments and monitoring and analysis of this should be carried out and where possible, make links to the marine environment. There are already several management approaches that have been applied to lakes and wetlands. This need to understand and build capacity for the integrated lake basin management. There's need for that, to understand the lake, the lake basin management approach and infuse this with a well-known integrated water resource management, the IWRM. However, we are beginning to realize that nature-based solutions to a myriad of lakes and wetlands problems need also to be applied. In conclusion, I'd like to say, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, that the Global Water Agenda 2030 should not lose focus of the lakes and wetlands. The process of mainstreaming lakes in the Global Water Agenda will entail that we give visibility and priority to managing lakes based on credible science for the benefit of human beings and their health and well-being, while at the same time considering human socioeconomic development needs and ensuring that lakes and ecosystems are sustainably managed, both nationally and globally. Ideally, it will include the involvement of all stakeholders and the application of dynamic and involving management approaches enshrined in the science and policy frameworks of governments around the world. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I therefore wish to, I therefore wish you a fruitful deliberations in this session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patrick. We have been collaborating for quite some time and it's very appropriate for this meeting to have another opening remarks, this time from ICIC President Kazuhiko Takehoto. Please.
Thank you, Professor Nakamura. Good afternoon to Mexico. Good morning from Japan. On behalf of the ICIC, I am very pleased to welcome you to this special session. Along with our co-hosting partner, UNEP, we'd like to extend our sincere thanks to the government officials and experts for joining us today. Our foundation ICIC has developed a wide range of activities to address the sustainable management and the conservation of lakes and their basins around the world. In addition to convening the World Lake Conference, ICIC has focused on human resource development through training programs on Integrated Lake Basin Management, IRBM, and publication of an international journal, Lakes and Reservoirs: Science Policy and Management for Sustainable Use. The ICIC plays a leading role in developing the global actions for mainstreaming lakes and other lentic waters within the Global Water Agenda. I'd like to draw your particular attention to the statement, "The Need to Mainstream Lakes and Other Lentic Waters Within the Global Water Agenda", which has been developed jointly by the UNEP and ICIC. It is our wish that this statement will be able to provide the international community with a basis for active and constructive discussions at the important global forum, such as UNIA V and the Ninth World Water Forum to be held in early next year. In light of this, I would like to seek your further cooperation by sharing with you the following three objectives of this session, namely, to broadly share an overview of the statement, which as I have extended before, to exchange the experience and lessons learned in policy development on IRBM around the world, and to jointly build the momentum toward the upcoming global forum, in particular, UNIA 5.2. Finally, I would like to conclude my remarks by wishing you a fruitful session through your active participation. Thank you very much and once again, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Takehoto. We will now go into the substance of this session. The first of series of presentations will be by Professor Walter Rust, the Chairman of ICIC Scientific Committee. He will be presenting to us the very reason why we have this meeting, entitled "Why Mainstreaming?" Professor Rust, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much and welcome to everybody that is here. I will try to give you one of the reasons we are here. And I'm not as good-looking as my two previous speakers, so I'm going to present some PowerPoint presentations that may make the point better than I can. Hopefully, I can do this properly. Like there's a saying, I don't know what makes it work, but I drive it, so let's give it a shot. Okay. Mainstreaming lakes into the global water agenda and the SDGs, Sustainable Development Goals. And I'm going to provide rationale that says why we're doing all this. Previous speaker has touched on this a little bit. The majority of, you look at the Earth, it's all blue, which means there's a lot of water. In fact, it covers 75% of the surface. If you take all that water away and look at all the fresh water on the surface that is an unfrozen farm, I've heard that before, liquid farm, only about 1%, and this is of all the water on the surface of the Earth. There is groundwater and a lot of it below ground. A lot of it is also, the majority of it is too deep to be removed economically or even technically. And the overwhelming majority of that liquid fresh water is contained in lakes, wetlands and other bodies of standing water, which we call lentic water systems. These are bodies of standing water, contrasted with what we call lodic water systems, which are flowing systems. And I always like to present this particular statistic because it just astounds me every time I see it. If we consider the five North American Great Lakes, the seven African Great Lakes and Lake Baikal, the deepest lake in the world, collectively, they contain about 2/3 of all, all the liquid fresh water on the surface of the Earth. To me, that's absolutely incredible, in 13 lakes. So, we know they have a lot of fresh water in them. There are major freshwater storage facilities and we'll talk about what that means in regard to climate change in a moment. They're readily accessible in the sense of you can walk over and stick a bucket in and walk away with some if you wish. And they have high resource values and that we can use them for so much. And there are millions of them. They're on every continent, including of all places Antarctica. And if we consider the lakes that we have constructed, man-made lakes, we call them reservoirs, dams in some places, we already have about 45,000 of them as well and almost 2,000 more that are becoming online in the future. And if you don't believe me, just this one of the tables that we have, you can take a look at how many lakes we have, millions and millions of them. They provide a greater range of beneficial water uses. We call them ecosystem services and you can see what they are. We drink it, we wash our clothes with it, we use it to grow crops, we catch fish in it, we like to swim in it, play. And it's also pretty. And tourism is an important thing in some areas. It has religious significance. And of course, that's all human water uses. Nature needs water too. A wetland without any water is not a wetland. So, and it's needed to support a wide range of flora and fauna. And right now, coincidentally, the Conference of the Parties 26 is being meeting in Copenhagen and they're talking about climate change. And as I mentioned, this water storage capacity has implications as a mitigation factor. They provide stability in regard to predictive changes in rainfall patterns around the world. Some areas are going to receive more water, some areas are going to receive less. And for the areas with less, they store water for use when you need it. And if it's excess, they store water so that it doesn't run down the river and kill people and destroy things. And it's been written by many people that if we want to achieve many of these sustainable development goals, we're going to have to have an adequate supply of sustainable fresh water. Now, having said all this, our ability to manage lakes for sustainable use has been far less than satisfactory. And you might ask, why? Why? There's so important why? Well, let me around here. We go back to this Sustainable Development Goal 6, and I'm just quoting it. It says, "Ensure availability and sustainable management of water and sanitation for all." And if you look at the target 6.6, it says, "By 2020, protect and restore water-related ecosystems, including so-and-so and so-and-so aquifers and lakes." And this is the first time lakes have been specifically mentioned in a global document of this kind. By the way, we really missed the 2020 deadline, that's for sure. One other factor is that UN-related agencies and similar agencies exist for virtually every other kind of water system, rivers. We have the International ISARM and UNESCO for aquifers, large rain regional seas of UNEP, et cetera, the International Oceanographic Commission for Open Oceans. But we don't have anything similar for lakes. So, you have to come to the conclusion for some reason, they are a missing link in the global water agenda. And well, what's the global water agenda? Well, let's think the Sustainable Development Goal 6, which focuses on water security. And this defined in terms of things like human health, well-being and economic livelihoods, protection against pollution and disasters related to water, and fortunately, it also mentions preserving ecosystems. So, to do all this stuff requires what we call good water governance that's directed to sustainable management. It's essential to achieving the targets and sustainable water systems and sustainable ecosystem services, good water governance. Now, there are two implications regarding sustainable lake management. One is that lakes aren't just a big hole in the ground filled with water. They're interlinked with inflowing and outflowing, flowing systems, rivers, tributaries, et cetera, as well as the lakes themselves. So, they're difficult in terms to manage in terms of sustainable use and management and protection and conservation. So, these lentic features mean that management approach has to be tailored to address them. It can't continue to be ignored under broad umbrellas of lake management terms. And I'd also add that we have been noting recently that this lentic/lodic term expresses a linkage, an ecological anthropogenic state of water with evolutionary and historic memories of human-nature interactions, so that the management approach for these systems, lentic/lodic systems, must be different from and more sophisticated than either managing lodic or lentic water systems alone. So, that brings us to Integrated Lake Basin Management. I just mentioned, I like quoting the same because it shows several things. Sustainable management of lakes through holistic approach that is gradual, incremental and continuous. And I say continuous because managing lakes is not a one-time shock. It's something that has to go on forever because uses change, situations change, et cetera. And the management situations have to be adjusted for that purpose. And it includes sustained efforts for integrating six, what we call pillars, you've probably heard that term, institutional responsibilities, policy directions, participation by stakeholders, knowledge whether scientific or traditional. Meaning, you know, I've lived here for 100 years around this lake. I know what it's like and how it's changed over time. Technological possibilities, meaning technology or not. Sometimes you can use behavioral changes instead of having to build something. And finally, funding prospects and constraints because no one ever has enough money. And IRBM, Integrated Lake Basin Management, tends to be the only conceptual framework that exists that reflects the lessons learned from lake basin management experiences that ICIC has been involved with in a number of countries in Asia-Pacific region and Africa, and now starting in Latin America, and to address those lessons learned and the unique features of lentic water systems. And what are those features? I'm not going to go into this, we don't have time. Three of the important ones are integrated nature. Everything comes together, it's like a big pot. It's got a long water retention time because the amount of water in lakes is typically usually more than is coming in or going out, which means there's a buffer capacity, so problems can take a long time to become evident. And it also means that solutions can take a long time to be shown as well. And finally, complex response dynamics. Everything's coming together. It interacts synergistically, antagonistically, so we often don't know how that lake is going to behave and can predict it. So, here we get to IRBM. Everyone, if you have not seen this somewhere in the course of the last two days, you've got to have been blind. It's supposed to represent, we call this the IRBM pagoda. You can see a drainage basin there. There's a lake and a drainage basin leading to it. And the IRBM umbrella meant to manage all of it, the lentic/lodic linkages. And we call these the pillars, the ones I just mentioned, institutional responsibilities and policy directions, et cetera. And I might add that technical people often don't, and these are such things that aren't necessarily in their range. So, we've also, ICIC has also fixed this little book on the right here, called Guidelines for Lake Briefs. So, you can get the information to address what you might need to determine whether or not these pillars are in good shape or whether they need to work. To that end, starting, I guess, back with the colloquium we had in Iboraki World Lake Conference, we put together a document called "For Mainstreaming Lakes and Other Lentic Water Systems in the Global Water Agenda." This was our first attempt and I just have a picture here on the right of what the document is. It happens to be on the ICIC website. Oops, I didn't mean to go that fast. And we also recently, in cooperation with UNEP, have prepared what we call a pictorial report, "Mainstreaming Lakes and Wetlands and the Global Water Agenda and Sustainable Development Goals." And I'm not going to show that picture because our UNEP colleague here is going to be introducing and launching it in a few minutes and you will see it. It's a beautiful piece of work and we think it's very explanatory as to all the reasons that we need to mainstream lakes. And we expect in terms of mainstreaming outcomes from session discussions here to be included in some manner in the Wana Wako Declaration and being used as ammunition or background, whatever you want to call it, support for this effort at the upcoming United Nations Environmental Assembly Number 5, which is going to be held in February, just in a couple of months in UNEP headquarters. And we have, and we say this because lake management has introduced for the first time, has been introduced for the first time for discussion at UNIA. And the theme of UNIA is Strengthening Actions for Nature to Achieve the Sustainable Development Goals, so it's very timely. And the significance of this is that the United Nations now is starting, or will hopefully discuss the need for managing lakes and recognize them specifically for their ecosystem services and for the vast quantity of water they contain and how sensitive they are to degradation, misuse and pollution. And we also expect we will be issuing a mainstreaming lakes call to action discussion item at the Ninth World Water Forum, which actually follows the UNIA V component by one month. It's going to be held in Dakar, Senegal, with the theme "Water Security for Peace and Development." So, we have the possibility now of mainstreaming lakes. We're getting support for it, more and more support all the time, which we're very pleased with. And what comes out of here, we're going to put in the declaration in some form and we're also going to use it for ammunition for UNIA V. And I just wanted to show this because we have a lot of IRBM-related publications that underlie the mainstreaming of lakes statement. And if you wanted to take down the linkage to this saying, all these are available, they're free, downloadable, and many of them are available in several languages, which you might find useful in your own situation. And with that, I don't know many words to finish, but I can at least say gracias por su amable atención and hope I haven't destroyed the Spanish language. So, thank you very much and let's get on with the rest of the show.
Thank you very much, Walter. We have a series of presentations to follow, but I was just instructed to inform you that if you have questions during the presentations, please use the chat box. We will attend to it, if not during this meeting, after the meeting, and applaud it to the ICIC website. So, with that, I would like to move on to what was just mentioned by Dr. Rust about this pictorial report being prepared by UNEP and ICIC. That is a very important contribution to be inaugurated in this meeting. And this presentation of the report will also be done by Dr. May. Patrick, please take the floor.
Please make it full screen, yes, thank you.
Yep.
So, this is my overview of the state of the world's lakes.
Can you speak up a little?
Yes, this, can you hear me now?
Yes, but can you come closer to your microphone or?
I have, I'm very close to it.
Oh, okay, okay. Go ahead, go ahead, we can hear you.
I hope you can hear me now. So, this is just the overview of the state of the world's lakes and emerging challenges. And please, next slide, please. Now, why lakes? This is something that we always ask, why lakes? And people have talked about rivers and groundwater. Of course, 1% of freshwater on the surface of planet exists in liquid form, as has been very well mentioned by Professor Walter. And 90% of it is in lakes and wetlands. There are lakes on every continent, making them one of the most important natural assets and a major resource for poverty alleviation, economic development, human health, food production, recreation, hydropower production and preservation of biodiversity. And an estimated volume of about 199,000 kilometers squared, plus or minus 3,000 kilometers, covers an entire, covering an estimated total area of 5,130 kilometers, square kilometers. So, it provides a very wide range of life-supporting ecosystem services to humanity compared to other freshwater aquatic systems. Please go to the next slide. Now, when you look at the context of the SDGs, we have lakes providing us about 4.4 trillion US dollars. It's not a small amount and they contribute to all this. And they contribute to all these SDGs, as you can see. We have a SDG 11, 6, 7, 2, 15, 13 and 8. And this is not all that has been quantified, but you see, we're still, there's still some other areas that have not been fully quantified. So these lakes contribute to the achievement of these seven major SDGs and and the 2030 global agenda. Next screen, please. Now, I'd just like to say that as we have worked with Ilic over the years since 1984, we have managed to come up with quite a number of joint projects. And in this, from these joint projects, we have had several problems coming out. For example, one of the first ones that I know of was a survey of the status of the wild lakes, which was done from a project in 196 to 1995. The data book of wild lake environments, it highlights a crisis of water resources and aquatic ecosystems. The data book also contains a set of detailed 270 and 17 lakes from 1773 countries all over the world. And six major environmental problems were identified. One of them was lowering of water level, two, rapid dilution and three acidification, toxic contamination and eutrophication and extermination of ecosystems and biota. These are just some of the, what we have picked out of that. And next slide, please. As we continued working together, we came up now with the other projects, which was quite outstanding. That is the towards a lake basin management initiative, I L B M I, which was carried out between 2000 and 2005. We were less aware of those sharing of lessons and experiences from the Jeff and non Jeff lake basin management projects. And a publication came out managing lakes and the basins for sustainable use that was produced in 2005. And the key message of this product was lakes and reservoirs should be managed as integrated units within the basins. It advocated that integrated lake basin management complements the integrated water management. That is the IWRM approach, supported by a variety of parties. So you see, we have, we have been building up this, what I'll call like a crescendo of what needs to be done. Then in 2000, from 2006 to 2016, we had the well-known transboundary waters assessment program, which involves quite a number of countries, five publications came out of this, including one on global lakes assessment. Next slide, please. Now, I'd like to talk a little bit about the it was truly vast global comprehensive assessment for transboundary water system, system categories. Where it brought out issues on groundwater, lakes and reservoirs, rivers, large marine ecosystems. It was indeed an indicator based assessment with linkages between the categories. It covered about 204 transboundary lakes and reservoirs, and it comprehensively targeted transboundary lakes basins down to the square kilometer with the participation of several U N agencies, whom you can actually see there, their logos are there. We have, we have the World Bank was involved, UNESCO and so on. And this shows a global collaboration on on just these issues that that we are dealing with. And the map on down, you see there is the transboundary systems that we are talking about, several of them, but I just wanted to highlight the issue of lakes. Next slide, please. Now, what do these projects do? Some of the projects that we have done, Ilic has been able to contribute to all our publications through its scientific members. Also, on the, on the gems water program, we have that lake data and information that we derive from that. Then we have the weather, the, this is the information platform that we are developing in UNIP. And there is a link that we are trying to make with it on the to the wild water lakes database. We have also had the privilege of participating in all the 17, now the 18th now, Wild Lakes Conference. Then the colloquium in Ibaraki, which happened in 2018 buildup. What now we have developed, that is the brochure. And from this, we have, we have the, the different webinars also that we have participated in, which have helped to So also on the, on the, on the SDGs, the activities are aimed at achieving as seven SDGs related to lakes. So what I'm trying to say is that the result of this is a buildup of the required knowledge and information and data for assessment of the status of lakes from all this collaboration. It is not just UNIP and Ilic, but we have had the the, we have, we've been able to associate with other U N agencies and partners and even sometimes on private produce all that you that we are seeing. Next, next slide, please. Now, as with regards to global overview, this has given, this gives us an idea of now what a global, what is a global overview of lakes. We see that there are still gaps in data and information required to effectively manage lakes. Now, the following are observations, which we have derived from the the projects and activities. There is still a significant lack of information on or lack of information on lake data. It makes it difficult to make, to assess the status and trends of transboundary lakes on a global scale. We also still have varied security threats per region from the TWAP. When you look at the African transboundary lakes as a group, they exhibit the greatest human water resource threats, followed by lakes in Asia and South America. It was observed that transboundary lakes in the development countries have greatest incidence of biodiversity threat with those in the developing countries exhibiting comparatively better conditions. Now, increasing pollution from point and non point solutions is source sources is the other one. Mostly this comes from industry agriculture and even urban, urban, urban areas, which are beginning to, you know, really pollute lakes, especially those around the lakes. Agriculture, agriculture and land nutrient and organic kind of fertilizers and pesticides is the other one. And then also we have overfishing and increasing incidences that are occurring all over the world. Then we also have the problem of invasive species, both the animal and the plant species. Then excessive water withdrawals, for example, you have heard of the the excessive withdrawals like from the R O C. And unsustainable land use changes, and then also mismanagement of upstream lakes. So these are what we, we, we think are the overview that we have derived from the past activities. Please, next slide. Now, of late, the issue of microplastics is coming up. And we're talking about the microplastic, which are about five millimeter of of special concern because this can be ingested through the food web. And from, this is coming also, we're seeing it in rivers and it's coming from also urban runoff. Then we have got climate change variability, land use changes in the lake basin, nutrient enrichment, invasive species and habitat and biodiversity loss. These are some of the ones that, some of the challenges that we are facing right now. Next slide, please. And then also we have capital deposits dams that have been built upstream of lakes. And these are causing quite a number of stresses between nations and also within nations. And also when you look at the ecosystem yourself. Then we have rising populations. Let me just give an example, for example, like like Victoria. In the, in, in about 15 years' time, you can see the amount, the number, the population that is coming around the lake. When you look at the red that you see around the lake, that is the population boom around the lake. And all these activities, the activities, you find that the pollution ends up within the, within the, within the lake. Then we have also shifting and of boundaries and lake levels that are causing also strained relationships on on, on, between countries and resources competition from the same. And also causing issues of transboundary cooperation around lakes. This are some of the emerging issues that we're able to pick from our, our, our collaboration and work. Next. Next slide, please. So what we propose as solutions? We have seen that the creation and establishment of lake basin organizations to govern and manage lakes at a local and transboundary scale helps a lot to alleviate some of the problems around the lake. Lakes management won't succeed without the foundation to support such pursuits, namely the gradual improvement of overall governance of the basin and beyond. We also need consistent and regular monitoring, data gathering and analysis and assessment, and also joint activities, not just for those around the lakes, but also with help of all those coming from away, further away from the lakes. Also, we need to avail more human and financial resources through financial mobilization and develop also the ILBM to complement the IWRM. The SDG achievement is, is, is very key, and we need to work with the private sector and the NGOs. And also apply the concept of ecosystem services as a basis for sustainable management in policy enactment. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, the action on lakes has been pending for, I would say, for more than 20 years since we began working with Ilic. We have seen that. Emerging challenges should be dealt with through, I would say, policy and management actions faced, focused on controlling the degradation of lakes and wetlands around the world by promoting efforts at the global level, which reach up to the global level in mainstreaming lakes and wetlands as key freshwater components in developing and applying national strategic policies and programs. We also need to develop a global platform for greater cross fertilization and sharing of data, information, experiences and lessons learned. And we also need to accelerate the replication of successful national lake basin management practices elsewhere. As discussed, many meetings, in many meetings, there's need for developing a global platform for adoption and integration of integrated lake basin management principles, which is beginning to pick up momentum. And gradually and incrementally, as do a sustained improvement of lake basin governance at the national level. And also, last but not least, adopting key symbolic actions. And one of them could be the like creation of the Wild Lake Day and associated activities. So these are some of the, the proposals that we're making and I'd like to end my presentation. The next slide, I think that's, that's it. Thank you very much. I would like to add that the, the presentation on the, on the brochure, if I could be given some five minutes, I'd like to talk about that also. If, if not at this stage, maybe at another stage, let me know when it's most appropriate to do it.
Thank you very much for your presentation. As I used, as you said, the, the report is available and Ilic will upload the report. And also, UNIP will make it widely available through its channel.
Thank you.
And if we find time, we'll be able to show glimpses of it in this meeting. Again, thank you very much, Patrick. Very comprehensive review of collaboration we had between UNIP and Ilic. And the current challenge we face within the framework of global water agenda and SDGs. Now, we have two of our distinguished colleagues from Ilic Scientific Committee. One from Australia, another from Brazil. Dr. Colin Maxwell Finlayson, the professor of Charles Sturt University. We have been learning a lot from him about wetland challenges. And this time, the title of this particular brochure that Patrick introduced to us has a lakes and wetland. Of course, we sometimes use lakes and other lentic waters. But Dr. Finlayson has been working on a wide range of issues specifically on wetland. He has been very active in Ramsay related activities in Wetland International. So we would like to hear from you, the global wetland outlook, Dr. Finlayson.
Thank you. I was just, excuse me, share the screen and there we go. So thank you for the opportunity to present in brief the Global Wetland Outlook, which was prepared for the Ramsay Convention on Wetlands and presented in 2018. There is an update being prepared on some aspects of this, which will come out in the near future. So what I will cover here is a brief description of the Global Wetland Outlook. Then the key part of this outlook is the state of the world's wetlands and their species and ecosystem services. A brief comment about the drivers of change in wetlands. And then importantly, some of the responses to these drivers. So the context of the Global Wetland Outlook covers, as Ramsay, as the Ramsay Convention does, lentic and lotic inland and coastal wetlands or water bodies. So it's fairly broad in its coverage. So there's rivers, lakes, et cetera, are included alongside coastal wetlands and the inland marshes and swamps, et cetera. It builds on previous assessments, such as the Millennium Ecosystem Assessment, which reported 2005. The Convention on Biological Diversity is Global Biodiversity Outlooks, the IFBS Land and Degradation and Restoration Assessment, and the Economics of Ecosystems and Biodiversity. The reason we mention this is that the Global Wetland Outlook wasn't just about the biodiversity of wetlands. It also emphasized the role of wetlands in developing the sustainable development goals. So the status and trends. The Wetland Convention looks at wetland extent and area, wetland dependent species, issues associated with water quality and ecosystem services. The text at the bottom of this slides, this slide is a very short summary of what we found. Wetlands are declining fast with 35% losses since 1970, where we have data. I want to emphasize this point, this, this sort of percentage losses are only where we have the information. There are areas we do not have the information and we cannot extrapolate safely beyond the data itself, but it is a fast rate where we have such information. Wetland plants and animals are in crisis with a quarter of species at risk of extinction. The quality of remaining wetlands is also suffering due to drainage, pollution, invasive species, unsustainable use, disrupted water flows and climate change. This list is very similar to the listing you just heard about in the presentation of the, the lakes assessment. So just look at some of the, the information. What is called the Wet Index, which is a global index of regional trends in the in the area of wetlands, done by WWF and the UN WCMC. This shows in the top graph here, for different regions of the world, the area of wetlands is in decline in all regions. It is, there is less decline in Europe and North America, but it is still declining and it is faster in some of the other regions. It is a global problem. It is also a problem for inland wetlands as well as coastal wetlands, coastal and marine, shallow marine wetlands. So we have this, I've just said it, I think it's a global issue for all wetland types. The area of artificial wetlands, human-made wetlands, has increased but is nowhere near replacing the losses of wetland area, all the species that are populations, all the ecosystem services from natural wetlands. So while we have some increases, there is still an overall loss. We look at this panel here. It shows that this, these losses are occurring for most wetland types, whether it's rivers and streams, natural lakes is the second panel, peatlands, marshes and swamps, et cetera. The arrows on the far right of this slide showing that for most wetland types, the decline is continuing. So it's again, it's across almost all wetland types, including lakes. Now, while we have this information, this report was presented in two thousand and eighteen, we're very aware of other examples where wetlands are under threat. And this example in Kazakhstan was brought to our attention in the last month, where there are proposals to basically build over, drain and build over this these lake systems in Kazakhstan to develop needed housing, et cetera. But we ask the question, why do we have to ruin the lakes or degrade or get rid of the lakes in this case? So these these examples, and there are many, raise a question about the, how much policymakers, town planners, city planners understand the value of natural wetlands? Do they understand the importance? And if if not, how can we improve our messages to them? How do we get the message true to the people who are trying to develop areas for other usually sound purposes? So we really need to focus on this communication issue about wetlands. Now to the actual species. Because it's not a surprise that if the rate of decline, so if the wetlands are in decline, then the species populations are in decline. Again, it is shown by this graph here, the Living Planet Index reporting in two thousand and sixteen, in this case, where freshwater and species populations are in greater decline than those from terrestrial or marine ecosystems, confirming that there was major problems of wetlands around the globe. But it's not equal in all places. As a general statement, there is a greater decline still going on in the tropical parts of the world than there is in the temperate parts. There are still problems in the temperate areas, but the faster rates of decline seem to be uh in the tropical areas. This graph here shows for um freshwater vertebrates and decapods, crabs and crayfish in different parts of the world. The red are the ones that are in most trouble and the blue, they're actually not not as much in decline. Quickly jumping to water quality, most of our water quality indices show major degradation of water quality in this graph. The red and orange on the map just so, map sorry, just shows uh poor water quality for a number of parameters, nitrogen, phosphorus, uh, BOD, et cetera. And it is projected, the bottom half of this panel, to actually get worse in many places. So we can expect these problems occurring, are still occurring. They're not likely to get better in the future unless there's some major changes in management responses. Ecosystem Services, this is just to emphasize, across different wetland types, across the top of this panel, inland wetlands is shown in the circle there. There are a lot of different ecosystem services. The color in the panel, the orange color with the H in the little boxes, show high values, then we have medium in blue and low. So the value of these services differ across different wetland types and in different parts of the world, which is not shown here. But there are, the key point is there are many ecosystem services, many benefits that humans get from having healthy wetlands. Drivers of change. I'll talk mate, just briefly about the direct drivers of change. But we also need to be aware of the bigger trends, the global trends, and the indirect drivers of change, which are population increases, economic development, et cetera, which give us the change in land use, the the water pollution, et cetera. I don't want to focus on those in this presentation. Just quickly, there are a number of direct drivers of change, whether they're physical, water quality issues, extraction of water, harvesting of animals, the introduction of invasive species or chemicals, or structural drainage and conversion trouble against inland and coastal wetlands shown here. The red basically shows these are major current drivers causing degradation. So water quality, you can see the red color occurs across many different water quality, I'm sorry, different wetland types. Uh, water extraction, similarly, you see a lot of red and orange on this panel. That means these drivers are across many different wetland types. And it's been going on for some time, it's mostly not new issues. The microplastics is a new issue or recent, a recent issue. But these other drivers are shown here, biological modification, urban uh port infrastructure, water pollution, invasive species, climate. So these are actually um well-recognized drivers. Climate change, we're talking about that. We often talk about climate change as slow as it's going to occur in the future. I'd like to emphasize, climate change is occurring now and we are seeing impacts in wetlands in different parts of the world. It is present, it is making uh existing problems worse. So let's look at the responses. These, we've uh broke up into four very broad groupings, institutions, governance, management, investment and knowledge. Institutions and governance is one I'd like to emphasize. A lot of our work on wetlands is done from a scientific basis. A lot of us have been trained as scientists and have worked in wetlands. To manage wetlands, you really need to also focus on the institutions and governments. How do we manage? How do we organize? How do we fund, et cetera? Not just recording the science side of it. So some of the responses, just a small number here. Responses, one was to try and increase the uh protected area network for for wetlands around the world at a national level is critical. This panel here shows the international level of the number of Ramsar sites at this time in two thousand and eighteen of uh sorry, sites that have been listed as Ramsar sites in different countries. And there's now more than two thousand four hundred Ramsar sites, which are wetlands of international importance. The total surface area of these sites is equal to about fifteen percent of the known global wetland area. There's a little bit of doubt about some of the data here about the wetland area, but it is still an impressive outcome to have so many sites listed as Ramsar sites, including lakes in this as well. The site distribution is not even and it is not systematic. There's room for improvement. Uh, the other side of the story though is that more than half of all Ramsar sites, at least more than two thousand four hundred sites, do not have effective management plans. So while we've developed a network, there's still room for improvement in the management. The responses based on that aspect, inventory, getting inventory, getting the information about the wetlands, about biodiversity, about the hydrology is is still needed in many places. And getting information on the management, the threats of the management as well. So again, it's not just a biological issue, it's a managerial issue and into the social structures that we have. Not all countries have inventories. The Ramsar Convention is encouraging and trying to help countries develop their inventory base to get the information to manage more effectively. This one here takes us to policy. The Convention has also encouraged countries to develop national wetland policies. A bit over half, the number of countries have have national wetland policies or are developing policies, COP thirteen for the Ramsar Convention. Uh, the most recent data from that's two thousand and eighteen just shows, just actually it is about half the number of countries. So there's a lot of room for improvement and to help countries get this. A key policy issue is shown here. So under many policy structures, countries try to avoid, mitigate or compensate the damages, or they use different words sometimes. But this is a general scheme. For climate change, we're now stating that for climate change, it's too late to avoid many impacts, some you can still avoid, but not all. So therefore, many countries have to move into the mitigation. How do you contend with the changes from climate change? We have examples, we can discuss separately if people are interested. Further response relates to uh information and the diversity of information, information from multiple um sources. There's a lot of information, there's a lot of scientific information, a lot of hydrological information, biodiversity analyses, et cetera. A lot of local communities and government agencies also contain information which is valuable for managing wetlands. That's encouraging people to work together, to work across and with multiple information sources to improve the management and not to waste time. This one here is about uh payment and financial mechanisms really for biodiversity. It's about payment for ecosystem services, it's about tax incentives, it's about grants and direct financial support. Again, many countries have these processes in place. It is really how do you get the best outcome from them? What is the best policy or best process for individual countries? And importantly, there's also stating that such policies should be very clear about what activities are not eligible for such support. Restoration, this has been a major issue. There's a lot of wetland restoration going on, which indicates a response to the damage that's that's already occurred. Many wetland restoration efforts are small. We're not saying that um small restoration efforts are not viable. We just, we're also trying to say that we need to encourage larger efforts as well for big areas of wetland. A lot of small efforts have been done successfully. There's a lot of large efforts still in place. There are technical issues associated with doing this, there's financial issues and it may require new legislation. The point here is that the previous responses that we've been talking about link into how we undertake restoration, a lot of us not separate. Then, there's a big emphasis on um getting wetlands into the global development agenda. Uh, the SDGs, the um sustainable development goals were mentioned in some of the earlier presentations. The panel in the in the middle of this slide really shows that wetlands and water and the biodiversity and the ecosystem services from wetlands are important for almost all sustainable development goals in one way or other. That is, the value of wetlands extends into the development agenda that uh various agencies, the United Nations and countries have been discussing and are trying to improve. Getting wetlands to be a central part of that, we think is an essential issue. Now to finish, climate change. Climate experts have warned that temperatures have been increasing, SIC levels. Please warn, this graph is about twenty years old. It is showing from about twenty years old, the modeled projections of temperatures, global temperatures. We are into the range those increases now. In many parts of the world, we're seeing the temperature increases which were modeled and predicted twenty odd years ago, but not necessarily um believed or taken on board by governments. Climate change is real, we have the evidence. Climate increases, temperature increases, changing climate patterns and sea level rise. It's really, how do we respond? One of the outcomes of climate change in particular is that many of our past baseline conditions for restoration and managing may not be relevant for the future. The climate has changed, the hydrology has changed so much. Can we restore or manage to a past ecological condition? In many cases, we cannot. We may be able to in some, if we invest, but in many cases, we won't have that opportunity. So therefore, what is the future of our wetlands and the services we get from wetlands and the climate change? It's a question that still needs to be answered. So to conclude, I'd like to thank many colleagues involved in the analyses and assessments as well as members of community-based organizations who support efforts to maintain wetlands globally. The Global Wetland Outlook was uh prepared for the Ramsar Convention and tabled at a COP of the Convention about three years ago. It covers lentic and lotic water ecosystems. The responses, I've mentioned some of these are in the hands of our communities and our governments itself. Well, to emphasize that, it's up to our governments and our local authorities to pick up the responses and implement them to get better outcomes. And to conclude, an epilogue, just wondering, did our representatives in the Glasgow Climate COP of last week, the last two weeks, represent and support our views and values and help enhance human well-being and our aquatic ecosystems, lakes, wetlands, swamps, marshes? I don't care what we call them. They are all intimately linked, they're linked to the well-being of people. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Max. We have just uh learned how closely this climate change issues that uh debated uh today in England. The same level of seriousness that we face in wetlands and lakes. And if we cannot take care of these water bodies so close to us, how can we look after the global warming? That's the very relevant question uh we have to come to grips with in the next round of our activities. Thank you again. Uh, we will have another presentation on uh eutrophication, cyanobacteria, health issues. The topic uh will be presented by Sandra Azvedo. Uh, she will be focusing uh her presentation on Latin America. But uh she has been working very closely with the uh health professions, well, health organizations and other professionals, not only in Latin America, but globally. Sandra, please, for his ears.
Thank you, thank you so much, Professor Nakamura. Let me uh share with you my presentation. Well, as Professor Nakamura said, my task today is talk about the lake eutrophication trends and health impacts and focus on our situation in Latin America, as I am the representative of Latin America in this special section, I think. So I have worked on it for more than thirty years and we know eutrophication is the one, the main issue when we are talking about water degradation, mainly inland key systems. But uh to to remind that since the life start on earth, there is no species able to develop their lifecycle without water. Okay, so any species already described depends of this solvent. But what happens if any species are completely dependent of water? Then, when we look for the human population growth and considering after the Industrial Revolution, we can understand that uh we, why our ecosystem present a so strong degradation the last two centuries? We are more than seven million people. We are more than seven million people, human beings nowadays. We have agricultural revolution, we were able to feed, to produce more food. It's very good, even it's not shared equally in different countries and different continents. We also developed sanitation that saves lives and a very important issue for health. For human health. And we also developed different kinds of medicines that save lives. It's very good. But we opt, our option for progress was based on urban society. Society driving by a bifossil foods. So, situation like this one and degradation of our ecosystems. Unfortunately, it's common nowadays in different places. Mainly in around our metropolitan areas and rural areas. And it represents a big challenge for health, human health too. According to a recent report from WHO, when we consider Latin American. Let me use a pointer here, maybe it facilitates my presentation. When we use a Latin American data and Caribbean area. If we look at that, we are not so bad. We have sixty-five percent of. People receiving a safety drink water supply. But even that, we need to consider that we have around twenty-three million people. Living without clean, safe drink water in Latin America. And when you look that about wastewater treatment. We can realize that scenario is worst. Only twenty-two percent of wastewater is. Is adequately treated in Latin America. So it's, it's one of the main cause of eutrophication. In our inland aquatic ecosystem. Sanitation is a serious problem until now. So, using that, a recent data and an excellent review from. YANAS, the International Academy of National Science. We can summarize the main cause of eutrophication in Latin America. That is related with a insufficient water waste treatment and sanitation. Agro-industry development without a sustainable management. Use, overuse of chemical fertilizer. Increase in agriculture without sustainable management. Also destruction, destruction of natural ecosystem, deforestation and so on. Okay, and the consequence that we cannot observe for eutrophication is very well known. But when we're talking about the consequence of this eutrophication. We cannot forget about the synergistic effects of the degradation of water quality. We have already, we already know about the intensive growth of microfides. The blooms of algae and cyanobacteria, fish mortality for oxygen deflection. And also the increase of waterborne diseases and evil chemical response for our waterborne. Diseases too, even new products. A new chemical that we doesn't know yet, the real process for toxication and depressions. And here we can include also the nanoplastic contamination. So we, we are facing water quality degradation. The loss of biodiversity and loss of ecosystem serve with this eutrophication process. Here, I put some few example of this consequence. For example, this is a heavy cyanobacteria bloom that happened in the intake water for Sao Paulo city. That is the biggest, biggest city for in South America with a heavy bloom of cyanobacteria. Here is a bloom of cyanobacteria in a Colombian reservoir. Doing a farming of cattle that's not controlled the development of use this land around this. Reservoir, intensive grow of macrophytes is so common too and cover all the water surfaces. And provoke different kind of troubles. And heavy fish mortality due to oxygen deflection. Do either seeds, organic matter dissolved in this water. These events unfortunately are so common in different countries in Latin America. Everyone has a better photo than others and we can collect photos like this. Well, we, we need to remember and keep in mind all their potential. Event, it's not potential anymore, it's a serious event that. Increase the eutrophication trouble, this stream water events. Or we have severe drops. That drop, then we don't have water, we have water stability. And people suffer so much, we concentrate that all pollution, all contaminator. All contamination we have in this situation. Or we have severe flooding that the runoff carry for the water system. All contamination that we have around the watershed. And it's so difficult to control, no point pollution in this situation. And of course, the kind of contamination we can have for human beings, population. And even human environmental health. So, El Niño events, for example, it's a common event that happening in South America. And we have situation like this in northeast area, it's a tower that is almost eighty meters of high. And then during the El Niño events, we have a completely bloom of cyanobacteria culture. And six months later, the reservoir disappeared because the dry season was so severe. We have six years without water in this region. And more recently, another event of El Niño provoked a serial crisis in southeast area. Here is a big reservoir close to Rio de Janeiro city. And it also transformed in a pure culture of cyanobacteria. Doing the drop season, so heavy drop season we had in that time. So, eutrophication plus climate change produce the perfect storm for eutrophication process. Okay, so we have a no point and point pollution. That during the flooding, carry and enter a lot of contaminants for the. The aquatic ecosystem. The precipitation stimulates this phenomenon. But also the global warming and the drop season can increase the stability of water. And then we promote much more algal bloom, cyanobacteria bloom contaminating its concentration in these systems. So also decrease the water quality and erosion process. And the waste disposal, all these anthropic impact. Can be influenced for extreme climate events. And it's result in water quality degradation in our land systems. So, I think I don't need to convince anyone that aquatic ecosystem is a perfect integration. Between environmental health and human health. Well, being of people and health of environment is completely interrelated and interdependent. We don't need to be convinced about it anymore. But we have some gaps that we need to face to control the eutrophication mainly in Latin America. First of all, we need to have a good background and well-established dataset. To design a very good monitoring and manage program. We only can do something knowing well. The data we have in the past. We need to know the past to construct a better future for our ecosystem. So, we need historical records and local knowledge. Usually in Latin America, we pay attention when some phenomena or some tragedy happened. And then we stop to pay attention because all their tragedy happened in another place. And then we stopped the monitoring records and the local knowledge is also forgotten. We need to design a monitoring programs using an early warning system to improve observation system. We need to know the early warning system that show us that the problem is increasing. We need to pay more attention about it. WHO is using it to monitor different levels of water quality. And we can do it for raw water too. We need to optimize the simply strategy. It costs a lot of money and it's possible to optimize the simply strategy. Please, we need to optimize also the communication amount to different authorities. Involve environmental, water quality and public help. Usually these people doesn't know each other, doesn't listen each other. And this causes the problem sometimes. We need to harmonize the communication between, between different actors that. It's important to control this problem. We need to keep in mind that each watershed, each aquatic ecosystem is unique. So we need to know the influence of specific anthropogenic activities. Or frequency, intensity, geographic distribution in a particular watershed. We need to know each watershed, to know which the main trouble there. If you want to control a little bit better this problem in our, in our countries. And also, we need analytical techniques. So we need to improve facilities and expertise to do this analysis. It's expensive, but we are able to facilitate it. Because without data, we cannot propose any management. And we cannot monitoring well what if you are actually recovering or. Not one water system. But I am an ultimate person, so. I believe that in general, for the main water bodies in Latin America. There is already a good set of information, ecotoxicology and toxicology. Of main natural toxic compounds, chemical contaminants. We have information about that, we have. There is also much information about the environmental condition to promote eutrophication in continental or aquatic ecosystem. It's the same in anywhere. So we, we know. What is the main condition to promote the eutrophication process? Also, there are techniques for management and control the biological and chemical contaminants. For different scenario, economic scenarios, even sustainable techniques. We need to apply this knowledge. To manage and control our eutrophication process. Therefore, in my opinion, there is not so much academic challenge. And it's already been overdone in many cases. So, what is missing? Why we continue to see eutrophication process grow and growing decades after decades? Mainly close the metropolitan areas, agricultural areas in Latin America. Well, we are not so good in translation of knowledge. We need to sit down, we need to listen each other, mainly listen each other. We need to know each other. It's a multidisciplinary issues. We need to pay attention in different areas that needs to be considered. To improve these systems. And what we can do together, it's impossible only one sector to solve this problem in anywhere. And also, we need political will. So, my last message. Is, when you're talking about environmental and health. We need to keep in mind that it's a multidisciplinary and not only academic challenge. Which we cannot no longer postpone it. I put the pagoda from ILBM platform that I, in my opinion, summarized very well. The six pillar we need to consider if you want to manage well a watershed. And control eutrophication in our land ecosystems. Thanks a lot for your attention. Gracias por su atención.
Thank you very much, Sandra. As I said, this situation just described by two scientific committee members. Ubiquitous across all continents. And time is running out. We have been. Very diligently going over the facts and statistics and scientific findings. But unless these findings are translated. Into policies and programs implementation, situation will not change. And the very reason that we have this unit ILEC special session is really to have. New momentum to be created towards that. Particularly in line with the SDGs and global water agenda. Now, we will have four short presentation along that line. We have organizations represented by citizen NGO activities. We have funding programs, we have very major scientific association of immunology. And the. Association of Wetland Related Activities, Ramsa. The first of these presentations is by organization, very close colleague of ILEC, Living Lakes. It's an international network for the conservation lakes and wetlands. Dr. Thomas Schaefer will be introducing to us the range of activities that Living Lakes is undertaking. Dr. Schaefer, for your ears.
Yeah, thank you very much, Professor Nakamura. Thank you very much for the invitation. Special thanks to the unit and to ILEC for organizing this very interesting, very good session tonight. Special thanks to the UNEP and to ILEC for organizing this very interesting, very good session tonight. Yeah, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to introduce our activities in the Living Lakes Network. To give you a bit of a break with presentations, maybe I would like to share a short video. This video about Living Lakes, so you will know and understand very well what this is about. And then I will share some slides and come back to the mainstreaming aspect. I hope you can hear me well and I'm going to share my short presentation. Yeah, thank you very much for your attention for watching the Living Lakes video. Yeah, join us to start a new era of wetland and lakes conservation. This is our ambition. Some of you might know that the Living Lakes Network and we as Global Nature Fund are proud to host this network as one of our activities. Now, we have it since 22 years. And yeah, just to give you a quick overview, we are active on all continents with our partner organizations. As you saw in the video, over 130 sort of figures here are not the most recent ones. 130 organizations in many, many countries. And yeah, asking about what are the topics you're working on. We as Global Nature Fund, when it's about bilateral projects, we do respond and we try to organize mainly here in Germany, in Europe, the money for, well, for the actual situation and problems and issues. Our precious NGO partners have at their lakes and their situations. It's a lot about biodiversity, what you see in the middle about restoration, sustainable lake management, but also about communities, about green filters and so on. We do have projects in many countries. This is maybe the project from last five years. They divide a bit in four main topics. Yeah, just to tell you, it's not all, not all of these projects are well done just by Global Nature Fund. It's always our partners who really implement those projects together with us. And what we do is learn a lot from the work of our partners and try to foster the exchange of technologies and the exchange of knowledge among our, within our network. Yeah, what we will do, and this is our important message, maybe hopefully starting next April, is we will have the opportunity to really upscale our activities in the Living Lakes Network with support from the German Ministry of the Environment. We will be able to do a project which will be called in short Living Lakes Biodiversity and Climate Program. And we can include here 10 countries on all continents of the South, Colombia, Mexico, Peru, India, Philippines, Cambodia, Sri Lanka, South Africa, Malawi and Rwanda. Hopefully the project, well, this is the early start already exceeded. So it will be most likely in March, but we have five years to implement and really a budget of roughly 9 million euros. And the BMU will give us 8 million of this amount of money just to involve you at an early stage, so to say, into our activities, our partners. What are we going to do here? We are really looking for the solutions for lake management challenges, just what was pointed out in the last talks also. This is what we want to tackle in those 10 countries. It's about, it's going to be about biodiversity-friendly agriculture and tourism mainly. It's, we will have senior working groups, working groups with senior advisors, participatory monitoring. We will try to create market opportunities. It's a lot about financing these days, about making bankable the project of our partners. This is what we are trying to do here, just to give a very rough overview for you in limited time. And yeah, please, what we heard and what is also very much our perspective, that the projections for lakes and wetlands worldwide are really not good. And we need a change in paradigm. This is what we do say, as wetlands and lakes have been disregarded over the last 25 or even more years. Ms. Acevedo just presented what happened due to this in Latin America and before we heard the intervention of my precious, our precious colleague from Australia. Please do understand my intervention here tonight and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity as an offer really to cooperate with ILEC and with UNEP to play an active role and bring together, let's say, the lake and wetland people in the world to create maybe some impact and really, yeah, change a bit the wheel maybe even until the end of the UN decade of habitat restoration, which we just entered in May of this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schaefer. Living Lakes, very active across continents, as you saw. And we are very happy that these scientific organizations and NGOs working very hard, but it hasn't gotten to the point where those concerns and findings transforming this global agenda into something tangibly counted on for the future sustainability of this very important ecosystem to be restored and regained. Now, we have one pre-prepared video clip submitted for presentation by Dr. Thomas Mena, a president of International Society of Limnology, SIL, very active organization on forefront of science. Many of us are members. And this organization very much, Dr. Mena agrees that these scientific activities and findings need to be translated into action on the ground, working with UNEP, ILEC and all the rest of us in that direction. So let's have this video clip shown on the screen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to deliver a short welcome speech to the 18th World Lake Conference. My name is Thomas Mena. I'm the president of the International Society of Limnology. I would like to contribute to the special session mainstreaming lakes and wetlands in the global water agenda and SDGs. First, let me quickly introduce the history of our society. The SIL was founded in Kiel, Germany in 1922 by the two famous limnologists Auguste Tinemann from Germany and Ainen Nauman from Sweden University of Lund. And for original name was Societas Internatialis Limnologia Theoretica et Aplicata. This is truly focused on the blend between theoretical and applied limnology. SIL is also truly international. Currently, we have around 1,000 members in almost 70 countries. And you will ask why SIL endorses the 18th World Lake Conference? Well, the reason is that there is a very good match between the aims of the conference and the SIL mission. The mission of our society is promoting excellence in studying and managing inland waters and addressing global issues. And our strategic priorities reflect this. Not only that we want developing international scientific networks, but we both want also developing and maintaining partnerships for sustainable management of freshwater ecosystems. And we want contributing to addressing global environmental and societal issues through a strategic alignment with the UN Sustainable Developmental Goals. Finally, I would like to mention that we want empowering researchers of tomorrow. And just to give you a short overview, in which way we focus on support for early career researchers, we have several ECR positions in the steering committee currently for communication and publications and education. And from next year on, we will also have an ECR on developing economies and in particular, global outreach, the partnerships with groups outside of research. We have special support programs for developing economies. For example, the Tonoli Memorial Award, that is a small grant for researchers from developing countries to do some research. The Wetzel Travel Award supports traveling of young researchers from developing economies to conferences. And we have recently launched the international mentorship program. The mentors from developed economies support the careers of ECRs from developing economies. We have started with 10 pairs, 10 mentee mentor pairs, but we hope to expand this program during the next months. And we also deal with publishing results to communicate the results by the editorial mentorship program. ECRs are trained as handling editors by members of the editorial board of our journal of inland waters. At the end of the presentation, I would like to give you three examples how members of our society contribute to bridging the fields of the basic research and application into lake management. The first example is Seewandel, a huge project led by the SIL member Pete Spark from Switzerland. Seewandel focuses on Lake Constance, the biggest lake in Central Europe on the border between Germany, Austria and Switzerland. The lake ecosystem is changing. What you can see here is the total phosphorus concentration over the last 60 years, with a strong peak at the end of the 70s with around 80 microgram pp per liter. Since then, there has been a drastic decline. Nevertheless, although we have again oligotrophic situations, one species of local corregonid was lost. We see already a change in the lake and air temperatures reflecting climate change. We see the mass occurrence of algal blooms currently despite the low total phosphorus concentration. And a consequence of a low productivity is a declining fish catch, simply meaning that a large number of fishermen have lost their income. So the final is that also non-native species have occurred, species and mussels, simply meaning that the entire ecosystem has massively changed. And in this huge project Pete Spark is leading, there is a collaboration of several research institutes, but under a strong collaboration with stakeholders, simply meaning that this change is not a scientific topic, at least not alone, but also targets policy and societal impacts. A second example, this is just the opposite, occurring currently somewhere in the middle of Germany, a relatively small lake, but it has been famous for its water transparency. The highest seki depth was around 12 meters for many decades. But if you see now the development of a total phosphorus concentration over the last 50 years, you see that since about 2010, there is a rapid and drastic increase of total phosphorus concentration. And this is very surprising because the lake is situated in the nature, in a nature reserve area for more than 100 years. So the area is almost untouched. There is no massive change in the land use around the lake. And we have to conclude that there is a kind of legacy of hidden previous unification, now showing in the total phosphorus concentrations. There is massive investment into the restoration of the lake and this project is led by another SIL member, Mark Gesner, from the Leibniz Institute of Freshwater Ecology and Inland Fisheries. This project has just started. We are preparing a feasibility study and also this study will focus on the interaction between researchers, authorities and stakeholders. The ultimate goal is to bridge research, limnological research, restoration and addressing the needs of the stakeholders in this process. The final project I would like to mention has started only recently. It is Pondful Pond Ecosystems for Resilient Future Landscapes in a Changing Climate. The project is financed by the European Union and led by Sandra Brusset. She is from the University of Vic in Spain and she's also an SIL member. What is the expected scientific impact focusing on ponds? Well, we want considering ponds as substantial contributors also to maintaining biodiversity and establishing climate resilience. So there are links between pond diversity, ecosystem services and climate. We also want to quantify pond contribution for climate change mitigation and adaptation. However, there are also expected societal and policy impacts. You certainly know that ponds, so small lakes, are almost totally overlooked in nature and water. You certainly know that ponds, so small lakes, are almost totally overlooked in nature and water policies. There is a total lack of knowledge of social and policy context of pond creation and management. So in specific demo sites in eight European countries, the nature-based solutions should be implemented. There will be stakeholder workshops and there will be a range of outreach activities. So we will create technical handbook, policy guidance, interactive decision tools and a climate pond prototype. So the aim is that at the end, ponds, these small lakes, can be integrated into policies and to provide tools to use pondscapes as nature-based solutions to increase the resilience to global change. By these three examples, I just wanted to elucidate that SIL and SIL members are active on both sides, on the research, but also in lake management. Many thanks.
Thank you very much, despite the fact that he is not here today. He received this pre-recorded video, very nice. Now I would like to move to two more. The first one is a very unusual presence of a funding agency, Global Environment Facility, nonetheless have been very closely working with us on many of the international project. Christian Oldseverin, a coordinator of International Waters of GEF. I think he is online from England.
Denmark.
Denmark, okay, all right. So for all his ears.
Thank you so much. And I apologize, my name is not Thomas. I realize that was the ticket to get the first speaking slot here, but that's fine. I will, I will, I'll give you a little spiel from here. So first of all, thank you so much for inviting me to today. It's a great pleasure and honor to be part of this session. And I'm also looking forward to tomorrow's intervention as well with you. So I had a feeling we would be going through a lot of presentations, so I will just do a verbal presentation for you today. The GEF has been around since, you know, 1991. So it's our 30th anniversary this year. And, you know, I just looked over the portfolio just to get a feel for where we are, what have we done, what have we achieved. As you know, the mandate for for the international waters vocabulary is transboundary. And so that's our mandate, that's our bible, that's where we go by whenever we do anything, we try to do this in a more holistic way. And as we heard from many presenters today, that is, it's one way to address some of these issues and many of these issues need to be addressed in a way that has this holistic approach. So we've roughly been investing, you know, in our global portfolio of in the five water bodies we invest in, so lakes, rivers, aquifers, large main ecosystems and also the ocean. Around $2.4 billion, leveraging $15 or $16 billion. The numbers are, you know, a little bit outdated. I need to get them updated with the latest work program that's coming to this December. No, but if we hold down a little bit, you can see that, I mean, I think it's a little bit artificial to say that if we just look at the lake investments, because, I mean, all of river-based investments, which count roughly 70, 70 investments, are interlinking with lakes along the way as they as they situate themselves within the larger river system. But if I just did a word search on lake, lake investments, we are up to around 30 lake investments, 25 lake investments in the entire portfolio, ranging from very large, I mean, lakes, Caspian Sea until smaller ones, Lake Tikka and others. These are not small, small lakes in any, any, any manner at all, but if you compare them, of course, there will be. Then that that comes to around integrating or working with 30 countries. So I mean, it's, it's not a big impressive portfolio, but if you look at it as such, I mean, it's $190 million. So of course that is something and that has leveraged around $1.3 billion of co-financing for countries. So all in all, you know, we're looking at $1.5 billion that we've invested in lakes, specifically in lakes. And then, of course, taking the broader portfolio, I think we're looking at a much larger number. So what, I mean, we don't have to talk about why we do this, because we heard that all afternoon here, that there's a lot of need and we're looking at all these different issues from climate-induced pressures to to pollution and, you know, maybe a lack of management practices and so forth. And these are still the same reasons we do it. But I will say, I will give you this, so we always, we always focus on transboundary aspects, so multi-sectorial, multidisciplinarity and cooperation, of course. These are our, if you will, our guiding principles. The other things that are, that are part of this mix would be inclusion. It's extremely important for all our investments that we not only engage with private and public sector, but also the CSO community. Gender mainstreaming and gender action plans are luckily getting more attention, not, not, we have done it for many years, more than 15 years, but I think it's getting recognition it needs to get. I mean, going back 30 years, you could actually see investments in river basins that would only, that may not have an environmental impact assessment. Today, that's impossible. You can't even build a sport bird road without making an environmental impact assessment. My hope is, and I can see that we're going in that direction, is that we very soon will be getting and having gender action plans, gender mainstreaming plans for even very small investments. And that's the way it needs to be, otherwise we will simply fail. We will not be able to address all the issues that you have highlighted today unless we do this as a common group, that everybody is included, that we have the entire brain trust of every, you know, every stakeholder in the basin. Then innovation, we cannot, we, to a certain extent, we can keep on repeating and using some of the old wheels because they still work, right? But we also need to get new data, we need to get new information and we need to get, you know, be innovative, not only the approaches, but also the technologies that are needed out there. There's a lot of ingenuity luckily, a lot of young people, a lot of old people, and a lot of good people coming up with new ideas. And that needs to make sure these things are tested and mainstreamed into our investments. That's one of the reasons that GEF investments have a very high, we are very high risk tolerant because we do realize that we cannot get these leapfrogging of of an environmental ecosystem and the status unless we also testing new technologies. And finally, integration, integration between different parts of municipality and different parts of the political agreement and all the different political decision-making system, as well as different sectors. It's extremely important, of course, that we look at, this is not, it's not a single, single issue from a single sector. This is a multi-sectoral issue, needs to be solved, it's a multifaceted problem. So that, that's the way we, we deal with it. And I hear that it's luckily reverberating to most of all the speakers today. So we are luckily in sync. We have been a proud part of many investments with, with the community here today. And we are very much looking forward to continue doing that. Tomorrow, we will have a session together with UNEC, talk about governance, financing and our IWLEARN project, which is also working on trying to assist countries and projects in sharing the information and knowledge. So that's it for me now. And I'm very happy to have been here today and I can see, I know the next speaker is Paul. Good to see you, Jerker. Very, very nice to meet you again. I will, I will sign off though, because I have very early start tomorrow and we are already at 1:00 AM here in the morning. So but thank you so much and best of celebrations for the rest of the afternoon, evening.
Thank you very much for your very precise statements about your organization and what to expect in future. Now we have the last speaker, Mr. Jerker Taimlander, Director of Science and Policy, Secretariat of the Convention on Wetlands. Again, we thank very much for you to take time to be with us. For all his ears.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to, to provide input to this important session. In, in this brief presentation, I hope you have them in front of you now. I want to briefly describe the convention as a global intergovernmental framework for all wetlands, including lakes. How this contributes to achievement of global societal goals, including, of course, the SDGs and and share some thoughts towards the end on mainstreaming. Apologies if I cough, I have a bit of a cold. So first of all, in context, I don't need to spend time on this. Very lucky to have speakers before us, including Max Finlayson, who prepared, did a big job on the global wetlands outlook published in 2018. So I don't need to go through this. Suffice to say that the importance of wetlands, including lakes, is of course exceptionally high, as has been stated. And we're facing quite a significant situation of ongoing loss of these wetlands. Whatever the rate is, we know it is much too high. And with that loss goes the loss of the ecosystem services that society depends on to a large extent. So the convention itself, the Convention on Wetlands is actually the oldest of the modern multilateral environmental agreements. It was signed in 1971, so 50 years ago. We celebrate the 50th anniversary this year. We now have, excuse me, 172 parties, so 172 national governments that under the convention commit to designating and managing wetlands of international importance, the so-called Ramsa sites. They commit to wise use of all wetlands, which includes adopting and implementing policies across sectors that ensures wetland use is sustainable, doesn't compromise their ecological character while supporting sustainable development. And they commit to international cooperation in relation to achieving those objectives. So the subtext here is really that wetland protection and management or wise use is a contribution to sustainable development, that's explicit. Second point is very important here is that the definition of wetlands, as contained in the convention itself, is very broad, which means that it does encompass all kinds of lakes. So on the list, wetlands of international importance, I think Max shared that information already, there's more than 2,400 sites. That includes 850 plus permanent freshwater lakes, it includes 440 seasonal or intermittent lakes, both freshwater saline, alkaline and so on. So it's a large number and a large area of these systems that are already recognized as internationally important. And of course, all of the systems that can be called lakes are effectively subject to countries' commitments under the Wetland Convention. So let me move to, to SDGs for a, for a moment. I think this has also been explained to some extent. I want to just emphasize that this has been recognized in resolutions adopted by the Conferences of Parties. So it's obvious, if you look at the SDGs, that six, 14 and 15 are explicit about wetlands. They address the state of wetlands or pressures on different kinds of wetlands. And a multitude of the SDGs are achievable only through wetland-related actions. And so the convention is, is an implementation of the convention at national level is highly important for the achievement of those goals relating to food, hunger, of course, relating to poverty, relating to climate change, et cetera, et cetera. Also, very important to note in this context is the fact that the convention, together with UNEP, is the co-custodian of one of the SDG indicators, and that is indicator 661 on the extent of wetlands. So progress against that indicator is measured on the basis of national reporting to the convention based on national wetlands inventories, which is one of those key activities that parties undertake to meet their obligations under the convention. So this provides a mechanism for supporting decisions and planning on multiple levels. Ultimately, of course, in relation to taking stock of and calibrating efforts towards the global goals. But also the national wetlands inventories are much more immediate policy and decision support tools for national wetland management, planning or policies within the environmental sector and much beyond. So they can be and they are used in such a way. Is there more work to be done? Can it be improved? Certainly. Nothing's perfect, nor is this system. The important point is that there's a intergovernmental framework under which there's that commitment. There's a system in place, there's effort in place, there's an ongoing process for enhancement, improvement, so that these inventories lend themselves to better decision-making, including putting perhaps more ambitious targets in place as things progress. A few more words here on, on some particularly relevant decisions that have emerged out of the convention. This is just a couple of highlights, and I think if you delve into the detail of 50 years of decision-making, you'll see quite a lot of commitment at the intergovernmental level towards mainstreaming. Want to flag that this resolution 137, for example, calls on parties to support mainstreaming in national development plans, so that's wetlands in national development plans, in sectoral strategies, plans and regulations, including in relation to agriculture, for example, especially in the context of the 2030 Agenda and the Climate Convention. That's quite important, seeing as several of the wetlands are exceptionally important for mitigation outcomes. All wetlands are really important for adaptation outcomes, for resilience and for water security, as has been stated before. There is no real water security to be had without healthy wetlands. There is no water security to be had without healthy lakes. And this is a clear reflection of that. I think it's also worth perhaps just flagging for a moment that a number of the resolutions address these points I just made in, in, in specific detail in relation to water, in relation to integrated water resource management or integrated river basin management. And of course, within those approaches, it's clear that even when they're planned and implemented, they often have significant implications for lake systems. Sometimes they explicitly encompass lake systems. Often they will be a clear result for lake status, lake management and lake contribution of ecosystem services. And it's quite possible to capture those aspects within those frameworks. But again, there's probably quite a lot more to be done on that point. I won't speak to this in detail. I think suffice to say that with with a long history of implementation, many lake sites, there's also a lot of case studies of how the convention has been used to actually turn around a situation on the ground, change the outcome for a given system, develop and showcase good models for lake system management. There's two on the screen. And, and I think if you look to our documentation, you'll find much more of them. An interesting aspect here is the importance of international designation. And I think that has been used many times to award certain kinds of protection or attention to a given site. It has also been successfully used to catalyze and, and, and promote the kind of action that leads to improvement in, in lake system health over time, to harness, of course, collaboration and partnership around that as well. So getting towards the very end here, just a couple of more points on on mainstreaming and perhaps trying to sum things up a little bit. I think first of all, as we've already noted many times, wetlands and including lakes is really the foundation for many very important things for for society. And we heard some statements very early on in the session that wetlands are perhaps a missing link in the global water agenda. And to an extent, I agree, and to an extent, And to an extent, I agree, and to an extent, I think it is there, but maybe in different words. Going back to the point made about the Glasgow Climate COP here, I think it's very interesting where the shift we have seen in the climate agenda now is that nature is everywhere, in every discussion at the Climate COP. I just came back from Glasgow. This is a very significant change in the nature of discussions. At the same time, that cover resolution, the resolution on the Glasgow outcome that was actually out in the public as of today, I think, that text does not mention the word water as it stands now in the draft form. And so on the one hand, you see this enormous change in the tone of discussions. And on the other hand, in the negotiated text, you don't yet see the full footprint of water that perhaps one could expect. So it's interesting to see where that will land at the end of the week. But the situation on the one hand is not ideal. And the situation on the other hand is perhaps not also as bleak as could be stated. Another point here is maybe that goes to say that mainstreaming is really still needed across sectoral frameworks in a very significant way. But that can't be said without also acknowledging that there is so many relevant commitments in place at the global, at the regional, and at the national levels. I speak about the Convention of Wetlands. I don't think it's the only one under which those provisions do exist. And because of that, there's also very, very significant effort underway at multiple levels and certainly by governments around the world. So in relation to sort of mainstreaming, enhancing governance in general, putting in place the frameworks that can lead to better lake management and better stewardship of those critical resources, it needs to be really fully cognizant of and leverage and build on those frameworks that are in place so that we, number one, don't undermine them. And on the contrary, perhaps support parties to the convention, meet their obligations, meet their commitments that they have taken upon themselves. There's an ongoing need, of course, to share these experiences, share knowledge, build partnerships, including across stakeholders groups, across geographies. And I think we heard just before some really interesting, really, really good examples of that. So I'm very happy to have heard other speakers. And last, certainly not the least comment here is that awareness still needs to be built up in order to enable those other things that I speak about, including knowledge sharing, including mainstreaming and awareness. Excuse me. Awareness raising from our side happens quite a lot on the basis of and in the context of World Wetlands Day on the 2nd of February, which of course celebrates all wetlands, including lakes. And that is on the basis of the United Nations General Assembly Resolution, it's now a UN observance starting from next year. So it's a very happy moment for our 50th anniversary to celebrate the recognition of World Wetlands Day as a UN observance right now. There's much more information on what I have spoken about here, of course. Our records are public on the website, there's all the resolutions. There's, of course, resources and publications that includes a lot of handbooks, including on policies, wetland policies, on laws, institutional structures, on water and wetland inventories, there's policy briefs, et cetera, et cetera. There's recently published documents by the Scientific and Technical Review Panel on leveraging wetlands in relation to climate change. So I'm flagging that because they are just fresh off the press. And there's, of course, site management tools and extensive set on them. Lastly, I want to echo what Max said, that there will be a special edition, sort of add-on to the Global Wetlands Outlook launched in the very near future this year. So please keep your eyes trained on that. Mr. Chair, thank you so much for allowing me the time. I'll leave it at that and happy to take any questions if they arise.
Hello, let us resume our session. As Professor Nakamura introduced, we are going to hear from the several representatives of the government around the world. First, I am very delighted and honored to have Excellency Vice Minister from Peru, Mr. Mariano Castoro Sanchez Moreno. Excellency, you have the floor, please.
Muchas gracias, Dr. Tagimoto, Presidente de LEG. Le agradezco por la invitación.
LEG, I thank you for your invitation to be here and for the most valuable exchange that has been this forum and that should be translated into common decisions. And I hope this does happen and is palpable during the UN Assembly in the next months. I am from Peru. And I would like to share with you some national data, but also regional and cross-boundary data. Peru is a country that is, that has more than 18 million hectares of green areas, of diverse features. We have a great amount of ecosystems in our land. And the wetland ecosystems, we have four categories. Tropical jungle, rainforest, more than 14 million hectares, the Andean hills, the coastal wetlands, and there are over 60,000 hectares, and the aquatic ecosystems in water bodies and lakes that are near 2 million. This significance that they have not only in their size, but in their role that the wetlands have in Peru, we know that there are great rooms for improvement for the management and the public policy creation in Peru. And the law determined that in 2013, we created a committee. The base of the committee was of the work that has been done in the improvement of information based of the water ecosystems that are, have a great extension of geography in the Amazonic area and other figures that I described in the beginning, demanded that we have knowledge and that we collected this knowledge and data, and also of creating strategies, and also in terms of capability creation and development. And this has also demanded greater decision-making processes in the present that have to do with regulatory aspects. This cross-sectional effort has been acknowledged and has also acknowledged the great value of the wetlands for the feeding people, for the livelihood of local populations, and especially for the identity of our culture. We could focus on this cross-sectional approach to face the challenges that we have ahead. And in many of the presentations, they've already mentioned the greater challenges that we have that have in all areas of the globe. And we have also to face these challenges by making a priority in the public-private investments. These recent regulation changes that we have approved in the Senate, as I've said, by creating consensus. This new regulatory instrument has the purpose of, has four main purposes. First is harmonizing and articulating the wetland management development. This has become a priority and creating new responsibilities that complement each other. How do we face these challenges? By taking into account the features of the wetlands, the illegal occupation of wetlands, the draining of the wetlands, and so on. Also, we have to take into account the strategic investment made in the wetlands and to have a play, to play a key role that is according to the seasonal needs for management. This is to establish new mechanisms, considering the technical opinions for the zoning of the areas in the wetlands and to catalog wetlands as well. How, consider also how the wetlands are going to make an intervention in the property creations and also the Ramsar wetlands sections in the sites in the zoning and forest zoning systems. This process is also supporting the governance of wetlands. We are making it a priority for wetlands to be, to protect them from the menaces that they are facing and establishing a new wetland management system and to create management plans for wetlands that are used. With regards to the peatlands, we have a great capacity of that in Peru. Other places such as Congo, Beirut, we have a great capacity of working with these peatlands. We know that we have to take special measures to protect these peatlands. We allow peatlands only for self-consumption and we forbid extracting resources from peatlands for commercial purposes. We're establishing then, following the criteria and procedures for environmental protection, to say how wetlands should be mainstreamed into this process in a more clear way. We have to be cautious of its ecological integrity. This is all involved within the environmental assessment process for investment projects. We need to have the technical opinion of experts and to execute all these tasks in the Ramsar sites, not on the protected areas, but only on Ramsar sites. And the technical opinion from the Ministry of the Environment means that when a decision should be made with regards to the environment, then the Ministry of the Environment have to be involved to design and to name the, to follow into these projects and to catalog them as international relevance. We are forbidding the disposal of wastewater in the wetlands. We are forbidding the discharge of wastewater or treatment water. We've also forbidden the extraction of forest resources and wood. And we're also forbidding insects. We've also cataloged the infractions and penalties that we have. We didn't have them in the past. So based on this, we've already made a cataloguing of the penalties that we impose to anyone who breaks these regulations. We're also creating the borders of these wetlands. And we also have technical guidelines to identify turbal areas or peatland areas. This effectively responds to very specific threats, many of which have already been described and exist in this country. At regional level, we have two, two, three things to mention. Please, it's to talk about of Yolala. The first one has to do with the Andean communities or the Andean people that comprises of Colombia, Peru, Bolivia, and another country. And we have common objectives within a specific agenda. Among these specific objectives, we have the integration of resources, specifically in basin areas and the cross-border or transborder regions that will give place to a specific observatory. On the second spot, we have the Andean communities that are involved, eight countries that are exchanging information and experiences and lessons learned. And this has continued even through the pandemic and should carry on after we can already start traveling and so on. I'd also like to outline two additional aspects. The first one has to do with the transport, transporter. Yes, specifically with Bolivia, we're working on the Titicaca Lake basin. We've recently created these guidelines and actions for the improvement of the Titicaca Lake that we know this is the highest lake that may be sailed. It's 800 meters above the sea, 8,300 square kilometers, more than 60,000 square kilometers. This great significance of this ecosystem, this bi-national effort, has been translated in creation of strategic access for intervention, strengthening the ecosystem, strengthening public policies, adapting to the climate change and creating information systems. And also in training and educating the people that are participating. This creates short-term, medium-term, and long-term tasks. And we have a bi-national level where the Vice Presidents and the Council of Ministers get together and identify the achievements and the outcomes. And we met at La Paz and we were aware of how we need to strengthen the supranational authorities. There are very few cases in the world where we can see this instance of a supranational authority that oversees Peru and Bolivia. And what we want to do is strengthen something to create a better management of the information strategies and handling strategies for which we have a new project for the execution that is going to be done with the World Fund, the GEF funds. And it's the management of lake systems. Because what we want with this project that has $7 million from the GEF and has four items for the two countries that adds up to 174 million, we want to update and build a common vision for the lake and watershed that are important for both nations.
And we also want to improve management, create assessments, follow-up, improve communication, and to close gaps of knowledge, generate new instruments and institutional strengthening. And this also goes hand in hand with the development process of each one of the parties. And we truly hope that very soon we can have the updating of the master plan for Ramsar. And I want to add to my dear colleagues and viewers that I thank you so much for your patience. We are very interested. We are working nationally, bi-nationally, regionally, and we want to have more visibility, more attention to international resources. I have participated in the first assembly of the United Nations Environment Programme. And I have been a representative for Latin America. And we are very interested in this because it has to do with the reality of the daily life that depend on the health of these ecosystems because it's the same, health of the people and health of the ecosystem. So we are going to work on initiatives so that the next assembly of the United Nations will be the second part of the fifth assembly. We hope to promote cooperation processes that are much more effective. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Excellency, for your remarks, which are very much encouraging us. In particular, the last part, your commitment to support moving forward for the discussions toward the UNRWA 5.2. And I thank you very much once again for sharing your experience in management of lake and wetland, also your update as well. And your message of our guru.
Con gusto saludarles. Mi nombre es Zulma Nena.
Hello, I am Zulma. Thank you so much for the invitation so that as Minister of Environment and Natural Resources, I can talk about the work that we have developed regarding surface water. In this case that I'm going to present, the information In this case that I'm going to present the information, SDG 6.3.2. El Salvador has approximately 21,000 square kilometers. And in terms of water, we are divided up into 10 regions. The main region is Region A, Rio Lempa, River Lempa, which covers approximately 50% of our land, and it's a basin that is shared with Guatemala and Honduras. We have a network of monitoring of 122 sampling cycles in rivers and 46 sampling cycles in the main lakes, lagoons, and the basin of Cerro Grande. The methodology of work that we developed is divided into four sections. The first stage is where we define everything that has to do with monitoring networks, the work that we are going to develop, how we are going to develop, what we are going to assess, as well as all the protocols, processes, and work guides to develop this proposed work. And that allows us to carry out a yearly assessment of requirements, both for the work that we develop in field as well as in the lab. Within the field phase, we go to the site and it's with a team and we develop measurements of water quality, measurements of amounts of water, as well as collecting samples. And then these are taken to our water quality lab of the Ministry of Environment. The requirement for these samples is quite specific. And generally speaking, we assess parameters of bacteria, physical, chemical characteristics, and we also have some sites that are quite contaminated. And there we assess heavy metals and sediments at the bottom of the rivers and lakes. In the phase of processing, once the laboratory issues all the results, we input this data into a database that we have. We also input all the data that we have generated, the quality measurements of quality water. And with all of this data, we review and validate this data with the historical data that we have. We have approximately 15 years of background information for rivers and lakes. And with that, we review and validate the data. After that, we can valid, once we have validated the database, we calculate the WQI index with the Canadian methodology and the ODS or SDG 6.3.2. And we also make assessments of the use of water so we can issue results regarding the water quality for drinking water, irrigation water, water with human contact, as well as use for larger species. So once all of these assessments have been developed, we create a quality report of water, and these can be partial or yearly. And then we input all of the data, all the results in our information system of water so that way various users can look up this information. Within the results that we have found, for SDG 6.3.2 percentage of good water for the water region of River Lempa, we can see that 64% of the water is good and 36% of the water does not have good quality. Something important to mention here is that to be able to assess the quality of the surface water, it's very important to include rivers and lakes. Because if we do not include lakes, we cannot have a whole vision of the quality of water, nor can we have a comprehensive management of our water resources. That's why we think that it's very important to include the assessment of all the different lentic and latic water within the assessment of surface water. We have assessed this case because Lempa River is the most important river that we have and the Weha Lake is a flow to the Lempa River and it impacts its quality. Lempa River and in the case of Cerro Grande, we have to consider the quality of the water of the Lempa River because we see that it's naturally cleaned through the wetland of Cerro Grande and it offers an ecosystematic service of cleaning the water, cleaning the surface water that come from the upper part of the basin. So that's the information I had to share with you. This is the information we have generated. Thank you so much for the invitation. And here is my contact information and I am to serve you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zulma, for her the presentation, which is very insightful, covering the wide range of their initiative in El Salvador. Now, let me move on to the two more messages, video messages from Asia, namely Indonesia and Japan. Now, let me invite the first speaker, Mr. Hermes Basalama, Director General of Watershed Management and Forest Rehabilitation, Ministry of Environment and Forestry, Indonesia. Now, please start video from Mr. Hermes of Indonesia.
Excellencies, Executive Director of United Nations Environment Program, UNEP, Ms. Inger Anderson. Excellencies, representative of other UN agencies. Excellencies, representative of the government of other countries. Honorable President of International Lake Environment Committee Foundation, ILAC, Mr. Kazu Takemoto. Distinguished delegate, representative of universities, research institutions, and all other participants of this meeting. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. A very good afternoon to all of you. First of all, let us praise God the Almighty for his blessing us to join this special session, even though we have to meet virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Let me extend my appreciation to ILAC and UNEP for the kind invitation and arrangement of this important meeting, despite the difficult situation. And let me to convey greeting from our minister to all of you. In this indeed, a great honor and privilege for me to join this meeting. Distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen, Indonesia has more than 1,500 lakes, accommodates 500 cubic kilometer of water, or 72% of the total Indonesia's surface water. Like in many other countries, lakes in Indonesia have numerous purposes related to the human life, such as drinking water, agriculture, fishery, industry, transportation, and energy. Lakes also serve important element to balance ecosystems, control of flood, drought and climate change, and habitat of biodiversity, as well as the advantages for ecotourism, education, and research. As a result of increased population, intensified use of land and surface water, other human pressures, and some natural phenomenon, our lakes are being threatened, such as sedimentation, water pollution, eutrophication, and decreasing of biodiversity. We concern that this condition influence our local and national socio-economic. And we are, and we aware that this condition may be also occur in other countries. Distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen, regarding these challenges, the government of Indonesia has taken several action. Here are, first, we have 15 plus 15 priority lakes. We formulate an integrated lake management plan of each priority lake and integrate it in local and national development plan. Second, we implement integrated programs, among others, special planning, development planning, forest and land rehabilitation, water quality management, biodiversity conservation, waste management, sustainable agriculture and fishery, and transfer for better livelihood. Third, we establish presidential decree on safe of priority lakes for acceleration of lake conservation and rehabilitation, and for coordination and collaboration among stakeholders. Four, we actively involve in global forum on lake management. Recently, we are proposing a draft of resolution on sustainable lake management in the upcoming UNIA 5.2 and inviting support from all countries and international organizations. The resolution kindly encourage all countries to implement protection, restoration, and wise use of lake by involving all stakeholders and integrate it in development planning. Distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen, finally, here with, we really support ILAC and UNEP calls for mainstreaming lakes and wetland in the global water agenda and sustainable development goals and for our collaboration on sustainable lake management. We believe that our effort can make better future of our lake ecosystem, our people, and for the destiny of the next generation. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hermes, for your remarks and messages, very strong message toward moving forward. And I also am grateful for your initiatives on the lake management in Indonesia. In particular, internationally, you are proposing the draft resolution for UNIA 5, and which will be further discussed toward the good solution as agreement. This is my wish. Now, thank you once again for your remarks. Now, let me move on to next speaker. Next speaker is Dr. Kotaro Kawamata from Japan. He is Director of Water Environment Management Division, Ministry of the Environment. Now, please start video.
Thank you, Dr. Takehoto. My name is Kotaro Kawamata from Ministry of Environment, Japan. And I'm very glad to participate in this special session today. And here, I'd like to provide a message from Japanese government. So may I start?
Please, please.
Okay, so I'll share my presentation, so. Okay. Can you sit?
Yes.
Okay. So before going into my presentation, I just like bit mention about that Japanese history promoting lake basin management. In 1970s, we faced severe water pollution nationwide and worked hard to improve water quality with various measures based on Water Pollution Control Act. The act regulates industrial and domestic wastewater by effluent standards. Thanks to the act, water quality in Japan has been improved. Nowadays, environmental quality standards are well achieved for rivers, but they are poorly achieved for lakes due to enclosed nature of lakes. To improve environmental quality standards for lakes, Japanese government has established the special act called the Lake Act. The act requires to develop a water quality conservation plan for each designated lake. That is the history and background of lake conservation measures in Japan. So I will touch upon lake conservation measures in Japan and the future direction. There are three pillars. First, implementation of lake basin water quality management. Data is quite important. That is a necessary information to find effective measures. Effluent regulations and the public works construction are key control measures. Non-point source is very difficult to control, so we need to enhance measures for non-point sources. Secondly, a target setting based on the characteristic of each lake. Bespoke plan, pyramid plan made for each lake is necessary. We need both long-term vision and short-term interim targets. Step-by-step approach is appropriate. In order to improve water quality, we need to improve lakeside environment and restore purification function of nature. Thirdly, promotion of collaborations with various stakeholders. Engagement by stakeholder is key to achieve that target. As such, Japan has developed a legal framework. We think these six factors are important. They are responsibilities of the national and local governments, and setting philosophy, policies, plans, and measures, the coordination and cooperation between parties concerned, and implementation of research, development of science and technology, also reporting on the measures taken, and lastly, financial initiatives. We think that is almost the same as ILBM's six factor, which are organization or structure and policies, participation, technologies, information, and finance. Based on the experience of Japan, we carry out training courses on lake basin management for developing countries. Here, I would like to introduce two training courses. First one is online training course on Indonesian Lake Conservation Program. Due to COVID-19 pandemic, this course became online course. About 700 people from local governments and academia participated in the course. And previous year, it was done early in Siga Prefecture, which has the biggest lake, Diwako, in Japan. Another training course is JICA Knowledge Creation Program, and the topic is integrated lake, river, and coastal basin management for sustainable use and private. For Sustainable Use and Preservation of Water Resources. And six government officers from four countries participated. Japan continued to support developing country for capacity building to improve lake basin management. Actually, ILEC, Dr. Takedo's, the committee learns these training courses. So I would like to ask Dr. Takedo to make supplementary comments on them. In conclusion, Japan has long history and experience to implement lake basin management. That is almost the same as ILBM concept. And Japanese government also welcome UNEP's and ILEC's effort to mainstreaming ILBM internationally. And we expect to widen the understanding through this special session as well. And also upcoming World Water Forum and Union. So thank you for listening my presentation. That is a message from Japanese government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kawamata, for your insightful message for our the initiative. On the Integrated Lake and Basin Management. And also the you have touched on the Japan's initiative on the human resource development through training. Course which the ILEC has been fully involved. And we have been working together with Ministry of the Environment, Japan as well as JICA. Japan International Cooperation Agency. To address the human resource development in the context of lake basin management. And we have a lot of experience and we would like to further expand. Our experience toward the global cooperation as we have discussed here. Thank you very much once again, Dr. Kawamata. Now let me move on to next speaker. The this might be the last of speakers in the series of discussion. The let me invite our colleague Vice Chair of ILEC Scientific Committee. Ms. Adelina Santos Bojar, we call her Lenny. Let me invite Lenny. Lenny, you have the flower, please.
Thank you very much, Professor Takedo. So everyone greetings from the Philippines. And I am very pleased to report about the ILEC-UNEP International Webinar. On Mainstreaming Lakes in the Global Water Agenda. May I now share my screen? The international webinar was held on October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty. With special focus on lake basin management initiatives in Asia and Africa. It was hosted by ILEC with Dr. Muhandiki as the master of ceremonies. There were hundred thirty-three participants from twenty-seven countries. Governor Mikazuki of Siga Prefecture welcomed the participants with a commitment. To promote the importance of lakes to the world together with other countries. Director Liu of UNEP expressed UNEP's commitment to work with ILEC and global partners. To bring the lake issues at the highest level of political leadership. And help governments make the right decisions and policies for lakes. The objectives of the webinar were presented by the ILEC President, Professor Takedo. These were to give an overview of the need to mainstream lakes in the global water agenda. And to provide a basis for further discussions in the international arena. Based on the experience and lessons learned in the implementation of ILBM. There were nine presentations with Professor Emeritus Walter Russ, the Chairperson of ILEC Saicom. Giving an overview of mainstreaming lakes in the global water agenda. Japan's Water Environment Administration was discussed by Director Tsutsuki of the Ministry of Environment. And he emphasized the importance of environmental quality standards. With from the Ministry of Environment and Forests of Indonesia, Ms. Dewati talk about their priority lakes. And the actions to address the challenges facing these lakes. In the Philippines, the lake basin management initiatives were shared by Ms. Ortiz of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Ms. Madhu Pandey of the Ministry of Environment of India. Talk about their wetland conservation program with emphasis on strengthening the implementation of the Ramsur Convention. Dr. Zati Sharif of the National Hydraulic Resource Institute of Malaysia. Shared that ILBM is geared towards transforming the Malaysian sector. The mainstreaming of water in the national agenda is one of the ten strategies in the Twelve Malaysia Plan. From Nepal, an overview of ILBM approach for the sustainability of lakes and wetlands was presented by Ms. Pandey. And of from the African continent, Professor Alago of the University of Nairobi and ILEC Saicom member. Presented the status of lake basin management in Kenya and the opportunities. For cross-sectoral and transboundary cooperation in East Africa. Professor Diop, my fellow Vice Chairperson of ILEC Saicom and a member of the Academy of Sciences and Techniques of Senegal. Offered some recommendations in addressing the challenges of ILBM implementation in West Africa. The discussion session was moderated by Professor Masahisa Nakamura, the Vice President of ILEC. There were three topics, of which the first was on the challenges of each country. In the adoption and implementation of ILBM as a national policy on sustainable lake management. Some of the key responses were as follows. First. There are different challenges faced by different lake basins because of their diverse ecosystem. Likewise, there are various pressures from the population, from the government priorities and local conditions. Second, there are several ministries, agencies and institutions. Which exercise their specific mandate in a lake basin. There are also various sectors which deal on water and water issues anchored on IWRM and IRBM. The Malaysia government was able to address this by bringing all these actors together. Through series of consultations to prioritize the problems. To identify measures that need to be implemented and to assign the responsible agencies. The output was a strategic plan that was elevated to the National Water Council chaired by the Prime Minister. The second discussion topic focused on the need for well-coordinated actions. To create a momentum for mainstreaming lakes in the national governments and in the United Nations Program. The government of Japan through the Ministry of Environment. Has been supporting and collaborating with other countries and has been sharing Japan's experience. In integrated lake basin management in other continents like Asia and Africa. Mr. Patrick May of UNEP reiterated their support to the efforts of countries. That seek to use ILBM and encourages their collaboration on this management approach. The third topic was on the key challenges facing ILEC in terms of taking a lead in mainstreaming lakes globally in Latin America. East Africa and West Africa. The following response came from the ILEC Saicom members. First is that many people are already using some elements of ILBM in facing common management challenges such as eutrophication. And biodiversity. It is important to enhance the network among national ministers of environment and water. To extend cross-mysterial collaboration and to promote inter-sectoral planning. Effective governance is critical and it is important to revisit the interlinkages and interactions among the ILBM. IWRM and IRBM approach. The lake will be more visible in the enggada of discussion by pushing these elements forward. Professor Nakamura provided a summary of the webinar with some take-home messages. First, the webinar provided an overview of the mainstreaming needs, accomplishments as well as challenges of the national. Regional and global levels. Second, these challenges are very serious particularly due to the institutional and human resource limitations. Third, the presentations from the national government representatives. Show that they have made a significant progress in mainstreaming lakes in their overall national water policy. But there is still a serious need to recognize the importance of lakes and land waters at the highest international level. And lastly, it is hoped that the momentum created at the successful webinar. Will be carried forward to various fora at the national, regional and international level. Including Union Five, the Ninth World Water Forum and the Eighteenth World Lake Conference where we are now gathering today. As you enjoy the view of Lake Biwa, which is one of the natural treasures of Siga Prefecture. Please allow me to mention that the first World Lake Conference was held at Siga Prefecture in nineteen eighty-four. Specifically at Otso City, which is located along the shore of Lake Biwa. It was in this occasion when the when Dr. Tolba of the Secretary-General of the United Nations Environment Program. Declared the establishment of the International Siga Committee. The government of Siga Prefecture responded by creating the International Lake Environment Committee or ILEC. Since then, the partnership of ILEC and UNEP remains strong as ever. Muchas gracias por su atención. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Lenny, for your report about the last year's webinar. Which has provided us with a very good basis to move forward. In particular, the outcome of the webinar has been reflected to planning of this special session as well. Now, we have had the planned all the presentations as planned. And I am going to summarize the quickly because we are running out of time. And a very short message as the wrapping up, including ways forward. First, let me thank all the speakers and the audience for their insightful input. And the participation. And through the active discussions today in this session. The experience around the world. On the lake basin management as well as wetland management around the world. And in this regard, I also extend our thanks to the all the international organizations and the member states of UN. For sharing their experience at the same time candidly share the sharing challenges as well. In order to the address these challenges around the world. We definitely need a global norm. The toward developing internationally. The promoting institutional development as well as the policy and the strategy development at each country. In this regard, we are very much looking forward to having some international agreement. In this regard, I come back to the very strong statement made by the Indonesia government. They are currently the Vice Chair Country of the Union Five. And they are the proposing draft resolution on. Lake basin management, integrated lake basement management. For their the discussion at the Union Five for the agreement. Now, in this regard, I think the a lot of discussions, the support that direction. In my understanding and then the our today's discussion should be reflected. Our outcome of our discussion should be reflected to the Guanajuato Declaration. Which is the outcome, conclusion of this World Lake Conference eighteen. In this regard, we wish to the further cooperation toward our common goal. Which is the achieving our goals such as mainstreaming. Lake and the basin wetland into global water agenda and its Gs. Having said that, I would like to conclude my short message in as the way forward and wrapping up. And once again, I thank you very much the all of you for a very active participation. Now let me return microphone to Professor Nakamura to the final message. Dr. Nakamura, please.
Thank you very much, Dr. Takedo. Very well summarized. We were very happy to have been able to accomplish. What we set out to do this time with the unit. Particularly, this lineup of speakers. Very diverse, from science all the way to management governance. Governments, individual citizens and all of the key stakeholders. That own the benefits as well as the risks of. Wetlands and lakes facing today and in future. This is very unusual occasion. We hope this this collaborative mix of. Expressions, opinions and the sense of direction be shared towards Union Five. Five point two, next February. ILEC would work together with UNEP and also University of Guanajuato. To put these output together. To in a way be able to share much broadly across continents. Sometime maybe in the next few weeks. In the meantime, I'm pretty sure that many of the participants, audience. Have lot of additional inputs or even questions raised to individual speakers. As I mentioned at the outset, we unfortunately cannot accommodate these. Online real-time exchange which at some point later we'd like to do. But this time, we welcome the chat contributions, questions. Expressions of interest and contribution and and commitment. To be reflected in the outcome of this UNEP special session as well as. Of course, the Guanajuato Declaration carried over towards next year. Union Five and World Water Forum. Again, thank you very much for your time. Was very interesting, very encouraging. Very unusual in a sense that we were able to do this in a very short period of time. Thank you again.